All right. Called the order, the meeting of August 4th. Those who can rise, please. Oh, excuse me. Let me get the roll call in there first, please. Getting ahead of myself.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Diane?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch? Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Okay. For those that can rise, please rise and we'll do the pledge allegiance. Brings us to item four, correction and or approval of the city council meeting minutes of July 21st, 2020. Do we have a motion of adoption?
No move.
That was Mr. Fields and Ms. Schmidt, second. Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch, are you with us yet? Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
All right, that brings us into correspondence. Who has something that they would like to bring up?
I've received a couple of emails. One was a letter on the 977 Pinnacle. I think, I'm pretty sure everybody else received that one. And then I also received a couple of emails from Todd Tempoli on reminding me of the ordinance 83-6 on referendums for buildings. Gave me a little history on how that ordinance came about.
All right.
That's all I have.
All right, Diane?
Yeah, I'm going to just mention, I just got a message from Doug. He wants to know if Steve Wilkie will send him another invite. He can't get in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, do you have anything for correspondence?
Yeah, nothing. I mean, I had the one Steve mentioned. I also did get some phone correspondence, some on the Tyronina Park, and some on the Mulberry Street. Tree lawn, grass situation, and things like that, but most of them will come back in another shape and form.
All right, thank you.
That's all.
Ricky?
I got the email that everyone else received about the golf cart path.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think we all got that same email. And above and beyond that, I did get one call and one email this past week about Tyronina Park. And it was actually just talking about the possibility of forming some kind of committee once we get the information that comes out of the Parks Board to see if we even wanted to do something like that to figure out the best use of that product. So, I told them we had to wait until what comes, until we see what comes out of the Parks Board and then we'll go from there. All right, does anybody else have anything? Do we see Doug yet?
No. I did send an invite, though.
Okay. Then we'll move on and if he has something, we'll find a way to bring that up later. All right, that moves us into question and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you're asked to hold your comments. We don't have a public hearing tonight, so. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting is called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address from starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. And if we have anybody that's making any comments online, enter your information in the chat so we can collect that information. Do we have anybody that's online that you know of, Steve?
Just Dan and Tara. I think they're here for the zoning item.
The zoning, okay, gotcha. Okay, and you folks are going to speak and you've registered with, okay, perfect. Then go ahead, it's all yours, go up to the podium.
All right, can you hear me? All right, great. So I'm Jessica Shresta. Sorry, I gotta take these off so I can hear myself talking. I'm here with Jason and Jennifer Ebert. They're sitting at the ball. Jason or Jennifer, would either of you like to share what you've experienced with the golf cart crossing? I do have a few items to go over, but I think we'll let Jennifer speak first.
I'm Jennifer Ebert, I'm at 977 Pinnacle. We are here tonight because of the carts that were continuously going down our sidewalk, through our yard, ripping up our edges of our lawn and our yard, carts actually driving through our yard. And it has really taken a physical toll, I mean, excuse me, a mental toll on us. Every day, we feel like we're policing people from staying off of our property, moving into the Pinnacle neighborhood. Never ever did we think that this would ever be an issue. We've lived in Lake Mills for 10-plus years. If we wanted to leave Lake Mills, we would have done it. We really need some type of resolution to this. Now we have this huge wooden ramp in front of our home. It looks completely ridiculous. We have orange sticks and orange cones right in front of our home. We look ridiculous on our block. It looks trashy, it looks cheap. And from what we understand, this is not a platted route. So why is this going right directly in front of our home? This is totally going to devalue our property. I mean, we've already talked about moving. We just moved into this brand-new house and we're already thinking of leaving because of this. We need a resolution and we really do not want to wait until this golf season is over. We feel that we have catered to the golf course plenty this entire summer. It's already August. When we wrote an offer on this brand-new construction home in January, it was never brought to our attention, ever, and it's also not in our title that carts would be running down the sidewalk, that we were living right on a side where carts would enter. That was never brought to our attention. There was never any signage, nothing. So when carts started running down the sidewalk and ripping up our new yard, that's when we started questioning everything. So, my husband is really, he's really on cart patrol. It is, every night when he comes home from work, he's policing people. We have had people make comments to our son, who's nine-years-old, on his own property. Golf cart people have said things to him. No child should ever have to have that, have anyone speak to them in any type of language. People have flipped my husband off. People have said the F-word to him. We're on our property and people are taunting us. So I just asked, imagine if that was your home. I mean, I don't even want to sit outside in my front yard because people are continuously staring at us and will just randomly flip us the bird if we make a comment to them. Please don't use my driveway. That's the other issue we've been having. Carts are coming right through our driveway and down the sidewalk. And even still, with the ramp on the edge of our, edge of the lot, edge of the curb, people are still coming through the driveway. So, we just simply would like some, simple lines painted on the road directing the carts down the street to hop on to the cart path. We really don't want a monstrosity of a concrete superhighway right in front of our home. And we also don't want this ginormous wooden ramp at the edge of our lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, and again, I'm attorney Jessica Shresta. And I can just add, when I was at the Eberts' property, I was only there for a short period of time. And just during that time period, we weren't interacting with the golf cart drivers at all. But at least one of them said to me, hey, do you want me to move you? Just right then and there, just standing in the driveway. I couldn't imagine having to deal with that daily basis. And to hold this up, you can see it on your screens, this is what it currently looks like. This is the so-called, quote-unquote, temporary solution that is outside of the Eberts' home right now. So I did submit correspondence, hopefully you have all received that. I also brought copies in case you need that. And I will provide copies of these photos as well before I leave today. We'll keep it brief, just to add on to what Jenny said. The, I think what's most important as well is that what currently is happening is not authorized by this city council. It appears that there was a crossing authorized down on the other side of their house that would have simply crossed the road. And that's in your city ordinance, section 615-7. It is not authorized in the current location. And your current ordinances state that golf carts are prohibited from crossing streets other than at specifically approved locations. Driving golf carts on the sidewalk is also unauthorized. It's contrary to state law that has been specifically adopted by the city council ordinances to apply. And that is detailed in my correspondence. There was a meeting, I think it was a couple of weeks ago now, that we had been seeking a meeting. The Eberts wanted a solution. They don't want the golf course to go away or go under, but they want to get this out from in front of their home. Unfortunately, we were told about two days in advance of the meeting, maybe probably not even 48 hours, that it would be a requirement at this time, apparently it was scheduled with the golf course without regard to us. I could not attend on that short notice. And we were kept out of the conversation. Ms. Ebert listened in, and what I understand is that the only solution that was being proposed by city staff was to essentially widen the width of the sidewalk in front of the Eberts' homes and make what I would consider to be a monstrosity, as it was referred to, but also, again, inconsistent with existing city ordinances. City ordinances, as I detailed in my letter, require it to be. It also would require the Eberts to take care of this and pay for it. And I can't imagine that this city council would do that to its own citizens, its tenured citizens, when there are other solutions that could be considered. We are, now have a temporary, so-called, solution that's been put in front of the Eberts' home. Great, this supposedly directs the golf carts not to use the sidewalk. But what it does instead is it places numerous orange construction cones and a giant ramp in front of their house. This also is not authorized by city ordinances. Specifically, section 573-19 prohibits obstructions or encroachments in the street unless very specific requirements are met and the encroachment is approved by this city council. I can't imagine that was done, it wasn't on the agenda for the last meeting. I don't see it on the agenda for this meeting. The requirements are, the survey, plot of survey, requires the owner of the ramp to post a bond. It is not a temporary, a temporary obstruction. There is a section that allows for temporary obstructions only for facilitating private property construction projects. That is not what this is. Finally, again, back to the idea that they will just have an extra wide sidewalk in front of the Eberts' home, we're told that the reason for that is that there may be safety concerns. We're also concerned about safety. The current obstruction, we think, is probably a safety concern. If it is feasible to cross the street in this location and to drive alongside the street, as we think it is, we would like to have an engineer look into that, not just be told by existing staff that we just think it's not safe. But to the extent that the city determines there is an unsafe situation, I understand there's a curve, seeing it myself. I think the safety problem is with the crossing itself. If it is unsafe, it is unsafe to cross in this location. I don't think that anyone could realistically say that the safety concern is solely about traveling along the curve for this short distance to get to the actual, what was approved crossing point. If that were the conclusion, that would be akin to saying it's unsafe for bicycling, to bike in that location, or for even a motor vehicle to park there. Rather, if it is unsafe.
Please wrap it up.
Okay, good. I did have more to say, I will end it at this point, but we are here to ask the city council to require the city to follow its own ordinances and to look into better and alternative solutions that don't put one city resident or property owner ahead of another. Thank you.
Thanks. Now it's my turn. So this has been about two and a half weeks that we've talked about this. And you have not given us any chance to even make any headway in this. So the only reason the city is involved in this whatsoever is because it crosses the road. You know the city owns the tree lawn. The city owns your apron. The city owns your sidewalk. We're here to work with you, to work with the golf course, to work with all the homeowners, all the bicyclists, all the walkers out there. And if you want a solution, you need to give us some time. We told you this was a temporary solution to get them off of your property. So please be willing to work with us and take some time. We understand it's been a long time for you guys coming. But you should have known before purchasing that house that there was a path there. If you didn't see that path beside your house. All right, that's enough. That's enough. We've, we've, we're done with comments. We will work with you, and the only reason we are working with you is because it crosses the road. And that's it. If it was anything else, it would be you working with the golf course without the city intervening at all. So that's it, we're done. Is there any more correspondence or any more public comments? All right, we're moving on. City managers report.
I didn't provide anything specifically, but I wanted to let you know that we have taken over the restoration on Mulberry Street. And they gave us somewhat of a discount on the price. And about mid-September, we'll take over trying to get the grass to grow there. I sent you an email about the archaeological at Sandy Beach, that that would probably be starting in the next week or two. So that'll be going forward, we got all the signed documents on that. Mud Lake Road is pretty close to being done. We did hire an engineer, and he is looking at 977 to see what can be done. We did have an engineer who evaluated it prior to that and was the one who told us that we shouldn't go with the, in the road crossing. So, I'm sure that we can have that full discussion when it hits the council. Does anybody know when Bartles Bridge, that arched metal bridge, was put in at Bartles Beach? In case anybody knows, let me know. I had a question from a gentleman out of Washburn, Wisconsin, who was interested. Other than that, I'm done, are there any questions? We should have budget documents for the next council meeting.
All right, any questions for Steve?
I just have a question, is Mud Lake Road open at this time or not?
No, it's not yet. They had to raise the road, so there was a lot of new bays put in. And then they had to lay sanitary sewer and water and stormwater and gas and telephone and cable. So, the road had been pretty much tore up from curb to curb, or from actually property line to property line. And this week, they're supposed to be pouring sidewalk and curb. I don't know if they'll get it all done, but it's quite possible that by the end of next week or the beginning of the week after, they'll have asphalt going down.
Okay, but the rest of the South Main Street project is finished and roads are open and everything?
The roads are open, I think all the punch list items have been worked on. Obviously, the grass restoration is in pretty sad shape yet on that south part, so they'll be looking at that. I'm pretty sure here in the next month.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? Okay. We will move on to, excuse me, item eight, council business. Excuse me. Discussion decision on liquor license premises for Hub 128, excuse me, that's something stuck in my throat. Could you read that for me?
City Council motion 20-8-1-1, authorizing the amendment of Class B and Class B licensed premises of the Underground Hub LLC, 128 East Madison Street.
Thanks, I turned it off when I coughed. I didn't want to cough in everybody's ear. Entertaining the motion of adoption for motion 20-8-1-1.
Doug, I mean, I have the motion.
All right, that's Doug from the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vicky, we got a second. All right, should we talk about this a little bit? This looks like they're moving to have some outside dining in the back. I guess, Steve, you're the only one that's here that can talk about this. Looks like they're looking for some dining out back.
Actually, Misty would probably be more in line with what the conversation is, but I can tell you that they're just looking to expand the premises to allow dining and alcohol in the yards. And they have a lot of grassed area around the building and it's not inconsistent with what we did at El Mariachi. So, actually, we, when we did El Mariachi, it was a conditional use permit. We changed the code in 2014 to actually allow it to be permitted as long as it was done under the liquor license.
Okay. Do you have anything else that you'd like to add on to that? Because they currently have it on their balcony, correct? Is that what it is, or the porch?
Porch.
Yep, their current licensed premises is the structure itself, no yard, and this request is to include their front and rear yard areas.
Right, and they did show the maps with all the, either natural barriers or the fenced-in areas to control it, so. Does anybody have any concerns that they would like to bring up?
So, yes, is there, is all the front yard, that would be just on the grass with a fence around it?
You get an answer, Misty?
Yeah.
She's looking.
Okay.
Yeah, the front grassed area would include a natural border as well as a fence, except for the entrance and exit areas. And I believe that that should be attached to your agenda as a document for review.
It is, yeah, the fence is there with the multiple entrances and the natural borders. Should I answer your question, Doug?
What, I guess my question is about appearance, what the, if it extends into the front yard, what that would kind of look like and whether it's compatible with the area.
Well, it's just down the road from what they do at El Mariachi. So my assumption, it's pretty consistent with what we're already doing in that area. It's right next to the bank and right across in the park, so. But that's up to you to decide. It's in their fenced-in area and it's most likely it's going to be people that are dining. I can't answer any more than that for you, unfortunately, Doug.
We haven't had any problems with other sidewalk cafes, have we?
Not that I'm aware of. And El Mariachi, and what they're requesting is into sidewalk cafe, we only have one sidewalk cafe right now and that's Doyle's Dogs.
Well, I mean, something in front of the establishment.
I have not heard any complaints.
Neither have I.
Chief Selk is here and he shook his head as well, that he hasn't received any complaints that he's aware of.
All right, anything else? Hearing nothing, let's call the roll call vote.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, that moves us on to item 8B. This is a presentation by the chief so. I asked him to come give us like a 15-minute brief or synopsis on things that they have seen recently and their stance on things and their path moving forward and, you know, I'd ask questions how our agreement is still going to work with the school for resource officers. So I've asked him to give us a little brief on that and I'll let him take it away.
All right, good evening. I'm Chief Selk at Lake Mills Police Department and I wanted to start off by saying thank you to City Council President Mike Foster for the invitation to come here and speak. As I went through this, I realized I'm probably going to be a little longer than 15 minutes, so I apologize. But racial issues are a concern in our community and change occurs most effectively when those in leadership positions are willing to engage, listen, and advocate for positive change. I will start off at the beginning to lay the groundwork of where we are today. So on May 25th, 2020, George Floyd was murdered by Minneapolis police officer Derek Chauvin while three other officers assisted in holding Mr. Floyd down or stood by. They've all been fired and they were later arrested. The world was outraged, including police officers. Protests began around the country, then around the world, and a majority of the protesters were peaceful. However, extremists and thugs, among those lawfully gathered, instigated the police into actions and then looted and burned indiscriminately even black-owned businesses. Media that was there to fan the flames and across the country, millions upon millions of dollars in damages were done and about 30 people have died. Protests continue to this day in Madison, Milwaukee, and elsewhere. Some cities have defunded police departments without creating sustainable plans. The narrative of police oppression. of police oppression, even in Wisconsin, has fueled a debate over removing police from schools and reduced funding for crowd control measures. I have met with our superintendent of our schools, and our school-related programs will continue as usual. People in Lake Mills saw the tragedy unfold in news media and decided to do something about it. A group of citizens started a Facebook page called the Coalition for Racial Justice to educate and promote justice for all people. A passionate Lake Mills High School student named Grayson Smith organized a Black Lives Matter protest that was scheduled to occur on June 13. However, prior to that event, people in our community became concerned as to what Black Lives Matter protest meant for Lake Mills. The term Black Lives Matter means a lot of things to a lot of people. I do not pretend that I can do anything more than highlight some of the many comments I've heard, but the two basic sides were these. Black Lives Matter supporters felt that it was important to move, an important movement to work toward equity and end racial disparity. However, others viewed Black Lives Matter through the lens of what they were seeing in the evening news, with riots and fires, police and tear gas, people being hurt, and businesses damaged. Those that felt this way about Black Lives Matter had a lot of anxiety about the upcoming event. However, I do not feel that these people were against people of color. They were just concerned about the movement, the Black Lives Matter, as portrayed in the news. I was asked to speak at the Black Lives Matter event, and I was truly honored to do so. But I already began to see a divide in our community over this event. I met with Grayson and her mother. I heard her intentions and knew them to be good and pure, equity and justice for all. So I went on Facebook to alleviate fears, let people know I'd be there, and it was going to be okay. I went store to store downtown, and I spoke with someone at almost every establishment to let them know I expected a peaceful event, and I welcomed people to participate. But as the event got closer, more people reached out to me that they'd heard the event was advertised in Milwaukee and Rock County, and thus not just our citizens, but citizens from all over may be attending with unknown intent and no stake in the safety of Lake Mills. I admit I had concerns for the outside agitators and instigators. We received a message that the rally had shown up on an Antifa Facebook page. Preparations were made with a variety of scenarios in mind, and as always, we hope for the best and prepared for the worst. Approximately 200 people showed up, and it was a positive experience and helped begin dialogue for our community to see how we can be better. I brought my 15-year-old son with, and I spoke for about 20 minutes on what the Lake Mills Police Department does to promote equity and justice in policing. The event is recorded and is available for viewing on YouTube. Within a few days, I met with the Coalition for Racial Justice and Principal Thompson to discuss how we can do better in our community. I have spoken with people of color in our community, and my impression is Lake Mills is a great place to live and work, but it's not perfect. Using race as a bullying mechanism in the schools appears to be the primary area of concern. While these events were happening, we still had to do our police work around Lake Mills. My officers did get some pushback from citizens, especially at the beaches. Two different groups of people were yelling at one of our officers at Sandy Beach. One of our officers has been flipped off a few times by community members while on patrol. This is not normal. I had someone reach out to me about the Confederate flags that were on trucks here in town. And I've spoken with a mother whose son was one of the high school-aged kids with the Confederate flag. She said the flags did not represent racism to the kids, but more of a country/rebel/redneck thing. We had a nice discussion, and I believe the flags have come down. Please keep in mind that NASCAR, one of the biggest viewerships of any sporting industry in the world, just banned the Confederate flag this spring. I think it is short-sighted to judge these kids. However, to many, the flags represented racism, and the kids were quickly labeled as racists on Facebook by adults. And it is two of the biggest problems we face, the quickness to judge and the labeling. And then people feel the need to put their thoughts on Facebook. On July 2, I was told of a march called 50 Miles More that was traversing Jefferson County headed to the governor's mansion. I had been advised that it was a small group of students and some of their parents or chaperones who were accompanying them with vehicles. Initial contacts with law enforcement was a mixed bag. Some people had positive interactions with them, and while talking to those people, someone would come and pull them away from the law enforcement officer, not allowing them to have dialogue. I advised that anytime the protesters passed a property with a Trump sign or a "We Back the Badge", they would stop and chant or yell. Jefferson County Sheriff's Office had provided an escort to a large group of walkers down Highway 18 because with the amount of people, there was some spillout into the roadways. Around 2:30, 2:45 PM, we were advised that the group had turned north on Highway 89 from 18 and were headed to Lake Mills. At this time, we did not know anything about their plans here in Lake Mills, and we had not been contacted to assist with any sort of traffic control. Once they reached Highway G, they got into vehicles and rode to Commons Park. They hung out by the lion shelter, and things were fine. Lake Mills Police and Jefferson County Sheriff's Officers, who were involved with some of the escort, removed themselves from the area. Because we believe they did not necessarily like law enforcement, we felt it was better to have a small presence in the area. After about an hour in the park, several left, several people left the others in the lion shelter and walked north through Commons Park. They walked straight into the street and chanted and headed toward the Lewis Station Winery. Lake Mills Police Officers blocked the roadway north and south of them to protect them from oncoming traffic. The protesters then cut over towards El Mariachi, and after a few minutes, headed south on South Main Street. The group headed south, some on the sidewalk, some in the parking lane, and a couple in the street. They went south to the mobile station, where some grabbed a "We Back the Badge" sign and destroyed it. They chanted in the parking lot. The owner and his wife and daughter were in the store while this was occurring, and they were concerned. Protesters then went north on the west sidewalk, and some of them pounded on windows as they went. They turned down East Lake Street and circled the block, ended up at City Hall. The entire time, law enforcement did the best they could to shut down the streets for the walkers so that they would avoid conflict with vehicles. Protesters gathered in front of City Hall. I was advised they tried to open the doors and pounded on a few windows. There was some sort of speech or discussion, and they walked back to Commons Park after about 15 to 20 minutes. Officers parked a sentry to be able to react quickly if they began to march again. The protesters cooked out and later offered leftovers to the officers and asked them to come talk. I've advised my officers in the past that in such matters that I would speak for the department, and I was not there at the time, and I feel I had a missed opportunity there. At about 9:30 PM, they packed up and left. They did not provide police for a plan for the following day. On July 3, during the afternoon hours, the group gathered back in the park. While they were there, officers advised they saw one truck with a Confederate flag go around the park. One of our officers recognized him. He was an adult man who lives outside our city limits, and I have since talked to him. I do not pretend to speak on his behalf, but through my discussion, I do not believe his motivations to be racist but political. I do believe the flag, however, did intensify the mood in the park. Expecting the walkers to continue their march at some point, Officer Adams was parked at sentry, waiting to provide traffic control. He believes some of the group was moving towards East Madison Street, and he moved his squad over and parked in front of the bank of Lake Mills to prepare to stop traffic for them. His squad camera captured footage of a Madison woman, first name Ebony, who pulled out of a parking stall she had backed into and strike a passing vehicle as it drove by. Debris from Ebony's car was in the street, blocking a lane of travel. Officer A-Strike pulled up to assist with the crash scene and had to use his squad car to block that lane because of the debris in the roadway. He made contact with Ebony, who was very emotional. Officer A-Strike allowed Ebony time to compose herself and asked several times about medical attention, which she declined. Officer Adams made contact with the white woman who was driving the vehicle which was struck, the woman who's not from Lake Mills or even anywhere in Jefferson County. Officer Wallace came over to assist directing traffic as Officer A-Strike's squad car was blocking the eastbound lane. After being struck, the white woman pulled over to the park, and immediately, people began to gather around her car. About six to eight people lined up in front of her car with their phones held out as if recording and taking pictures. Another woman went to the back of her car, and as Officer Adams walked up, one woman shouted at him, "Who are you protecting? Who are you protecting?" More and more people began to gather in front of the white woman's car. They yelled and chanted over a PA system while standing in front of her car and around it. Officer Adams went to speak to Officer A-Strike and was confronted by a young man who asked Officer Adams to explain to him why the police weren't doing certain things. Officer A-Strike had a similar confrontation. One man told Officer A-Strike, "Wipe that effing smile off your face." I can assure you that our officers had never dealt with confrontations like this at a traffic crash before, but they answered the questions they could and carried on with their business. Officer A-Strike had one woman tell him that she had seen the crash and that the white woman had swerved into Ebony intentionally. When he tried to get her name as a witness, she would not provide it. Eventually, all the paperwork information was provided. Ebony was nice and polite to Officer A-Strike throughout his contact with her. The officers were professional. Ebony was not part of the 50 Miles More March, but had come from Madison to meet up with them. The white woman involved in the crash said that she had felt intimidated. When she was allowed to leave by officers, a protester walked out and blocked her car, but another protester pulled that person out of the way. Shortly thereafter, Ebony posted a video on Facebook claiming to have been intentionally rammed into by a racist white woman. She stated the Ku Klux Klan was here, that police blocked the streets and would not allow her to get medical treatment. She posted online that she was injured and her back and knee were messed up. She also stated, and I quote, "After watching the KKK swarm all the protesters." She put out requests for others to come help her. All of these things that she claimed were untrue. I'm aware of one person from Lake Mills who responded to a sister at the park, and I was told by them that our officers were professional. Ebony also claimed in another post that an officer almost drew a gun on her, and a woman named Michelle Antonia backed that statement up by saying she had to put her hands in the hair and had tears in her eyes. There are also comments about Ebony trying to locate the woman who had hit her, and photos of the woman in her license plate were displayed on Facebook. I later had to call the white woman's hometown to make the police aware that people were trying to find her. One of Ebony's last comments was that Lake Mills had not seen the last of her. At about 4:00 PM, the walkers left town, and officers provided traffic control to them. Later that day, I became aware of the false narrative that Ebony had put on Facebook, and I also became aware that Lake Mills Police had the incident on dash cam. On July 4, at about 6:30 in the morning, I was made aware of the fact that a Facebook issue had escalated, and a lot of fighting was going on, and division was forming between community members. It appeared that many people had bought into the narrative that the white woman had intentionally rammed Ebony and that the KKK was in town. Degrading Facebook comments towards our community and our officers were made. In an effort to calm the situation, I contacted Sarah Wyrt at Lake Mills Leader, and we hastily created a press release which was issued. Sparked by Ebony's online comments, Facebook controversy surrounding a school board member posted something that appeared to have been captured and shared outside of her initial viewing group. The statement was not taken well, and a myriad of posts attacking and defending occurred, and eventually, Facebook page Community Forum was taken down. Permissions to posts were changed on the community network and the Coalition for Racial Justice. After the holiday weekend, Sarah from the leader came to the police department and reviewed the squad cam and body cam video with me, and the event was put in the newspaper. Based on the video evidence, Ebony was cited for failed yield right-of-way and warned for no insurance, illegal parking, and expired registration. She was treated exactly like anyone from the farmer's market or some other less dramatic scenario would have been. Ebony has since removed her inflammatory posts. On July 13, I was contacted by school board president Bob DePirio to attend a school board meeting and present. I spoke about unifying our community and moving forward. At the next school board meeting, that member had been censured, and discussion in the community is ongoing about starting a recall. It is truly disappointing what this false narrative from Ebony did to our community. She was not part of the group passing through, and her actions tainted the entire event. I am hopeful that people have learned to think before they post and to fact-check. It's also important to keep in mind that your posts are probably being screenshotted by somebody. So if you don't think you should post it, you're probably right. After this died down, there was a cowardly person who defaced several Black Lives Matter signs in the College Ferry and Lake Shore Drive area. To that person, I say this: All you did is strengthen people's resolve. You have reinforced the need to get the word out there, and you accomplished the opposite of what you intended. So where are we now? Without that squad camera, I don't know where we'd be. I'm hopeful some lessons have been learned about jumping to conclusions and speaking without facts. Right now, our society is quick to label someone and put them in a category. Before you call anyone anything, you need to know them and ask questions, not paint with a broad brush. Need to fact-check. You cannot generalize or compartmentalize. We are all individuals. You cannot judge anyone based on anything other than their conduct and how they treat you and others. And what is ironic is that this type of labeling, prejudging, and bias is exactly what we're trying to stop. At the Black Lives Matter protest, I outlined how we operate as a police department. Here's what we have done since then. We are rewriting our four use-of-force policies based on the Eight Can't Wait and the Wisconsin Use-of-Force Reporting Program. We will no longer attend training provided by Lieutenant Colonel Grossman. Working with a professional, I am working with a courtroom interpreter to make sure that any language disparities that we have can be resolved. We will be having training in September to teach officers how to connect with a valid interpretation service that are court-certified to get the best results. I'm working with an instructor to come talk to our department about biasing and policing. I've been trying to meet with people of color in our community to discuss their concerns and experiences. I've spoken at the school board. I've looked for input at Rotary. I've reached out on Facebook. I've been in the paper, and I am here tonight. I have been educating myself and talking with administrators of the Coalition for Racial Justice and the No Bull Boot. The city manager has done a great job of working with our department heads to discuss racial issues and starting positive discourse on how they come about. I have made efforts to reduce the Confederate flags in town without infringing upon anyone's Second Amendment rights, and I ask again for the fourth time to our community for people to reach out to me to share their ideas, personal experiences, plans to make us better moving forward. Talk is great. Education is great, but meaningful action is what lasts. Here's what I will not do. I will not be responsible for watching every social media post in our community and responding to it. I do not feel it's a fair expectation, and I am certain that many taxpayers would not approve of me scrolling Facebook 24/7/365 to make sure I don't miss anything. I will not respond publicly to anything I post on Facebook. I am willing to meet with anybody and have a real person-to-person discussion. Meaning and intent get lost through Facebook and email, and this issue is too important to me to have there be any misrepresentations. I will make the time. You do not have to like cops. You do not have to like me. I will listen. If you feel there's a problem with the police department, at least give me a fair opportunity to fix it. We may agree to disagree, but please give me the chance. Thank you. Does the council have any questions for me? Does the council have any questions for me?
I would like to thank you for preparing that presentation. This is Diane, and I think it was very well done, and I appreciate the effort you put into it.
Thank you.
I also would like to
I also
like to add my thanks, too.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Vicky.
Thanks, Mr.
Mike, I can't hear you.
Go ahead, Vicky. I muted myself again.
I just wanted to thank the chief for coming in and discussing this with us tonight. It's a very important topic, and I appreciate his time.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. So, we had talked a little bit, gosh, a few weeks ago about the resource officer program, and all that is still staying as is, and we're still going to have school resource officers and
Yeah, nothing, nothing has changed regard to our plans with the school district. What's been kind of interesting is that during this process, I think, you know, between COVID and some of these racial issues, some of the support that I've seen for the community has spiked to a degree that I've never seen. We've had more people send us letters, send us cards, gift cards, food. It's really been pretty amazing. I think a lot of people understand how difficult the situation is. Now you can add masks on top of it, and there's a lot of pressure on people throughout the community, throughout law enforcement, and I guess I take this opportunity to thank the community for their support during this time. We will move forward into the school year as long as COVID doesn't shut it down, and we look forward to a great partnership continuing into the future.
Thanks, Chief. Yeah, a lot of good takeaways. Biggest thing is, you know, treat everybody with respect and don't jump to conclusions because I think that is what got a lot of folks on the wrong side of things, I guess, is the best way of putting it. Everybody has desires and requirements to make their life better, and some people are very passionate about those things and how it affects their, their family. So, just ask you to take a step back, look at the situation, look at what's been said, and make a, a, a good decision based on the facts, once you get the facts. So, I think our community is in great hands with the folks that we have policing it right now, and
Thank you.
we're, same thing with us, excuse me, here in the city council. We're here for every person that's part of our community. We don't single anybody out for any reason whatsoever. So, we're here, and you can contact us if you see any issues also. So, thanks, Chief.
Well, thank you very much, your kind words, and thank you, all of you, for what you do and your leadership in this community, and anytime you need something from me, please ask, and if you have feedback from the community about these issues, please reach out to me. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, we are going to move on to item 8C, Resolution 20-29. If you could read that for us, please, Ms. D.
Resolution 20-29, City of Lake Mills Resolution to Terminate Lozep.
All right, I will entertain a motion of adoption for this.
I move Resolution 20-29.
Thank you, Doug. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Steve. All right. With that, I'm assuming you all had a good read of this and realized this is coming from the fire chief. So, my assumption is Vicky probably has the most knowledge of this as far as us on the council, but who from the staff would like to talk on this?
I would like, yeah, I would like Betsy to start.
Okay.
Yes, I can, I can speak on this. It was a couple of years ago, we started talking to the representatives from this program, and it's titled Length of Service Award Program. It's been since 1995 that we've offered this program to the members, and it really has not been performing to the expectations. Like, the cost is prohibitive because we are, it's not funded to the capacity that it needs to be in order to be a successful program. It's only 59% funded right now, and we're talking a lot of money in order to get that 100% funded. We're, we're just not going to be able to do it. The other side is my conversation with the fire chief is that it is not providing the incentive that it was designed to do. It was, it was really hoping to encourage recruitment and retention, and he's, he's just not seeing that in the fire department and feels that there are other ways that that money could be used to promote those things within the fire department, and he'd like the opportunity to develop a program to do that. So, we discussed with the members of the insurance company who are representatives for us, and they, they said that we could discontinue this program, and they assisted us in calculating a prorated payment to the members so that they will be receiving something out of this, but it isn't going to be a monthly annuity like it was originally planned. So, they would be receiving a prorated portion of the funds based on the number of years what their, what their account specific to them would be. So, each member is going to receive a different amount based on their length of service so So, Todd has not fully developed incentive program, but he does have some good ideas on how he'd like to reward members for attending training, being there for fire calls, coming to regular meetings. Those are some ideas that he's, he's had, and then he, he isn't sure how much he would be able to distribute to the members on an annual basis, and the thought that them receiving an annual payment rather than waiting until they're 65 to receive whatever would be available to them. And then, we also provide a life insurance policy that has a base value of $25,000 should anything occur, and that would continue. So, what we're looking for is that the, this resolution is passed so that we could dissolve this Length of Service Award Program and distribute the funds to the members, and then Todd would put together a new incentive program. Chief Yandre.
So, at this point, how many participants are we, are we talking about? How many people are part of it right now?
Well, the distribution would be going to active and inactive members, and I believe it's like 47, I think, was the number at one point they were talking.
And this would be like a lump-sum payout to totally dissolve
Right.
this program.
Right. All of the funds that are available in this program would be distributed to the members.
And I'm assuming that Chief Yandre has discussed this with all parties involved?
Um, yes, as far as I understand, he has. I know there were some questions from specific members that we were able to answer.
I'm just trying to run some other questions through my head to see if I can figure out anything. I just, obviously, legally, stuff like this could be dissolved, is dissolved.
Yes.
Probably every, every day, something like this happens somewhere.
We made sure that we brought Attorney Drescher through our discussions to, to be sure we weren't violating any laws. We did ask those specific questions about, to the representatives of the insurance company just to make sure that we weren't violating anything and that we were treating the members as fairly as we could for this program.
This is Attorney Drescher. I did review the origin documents, and yes, we did, there was no, nothing that compelled us to keep this, this program going forward, and the fact that it's as significantly underfunded as it is, it's not going to last anyway. But there, we had free and clear ability to dissolve the program at any time.
What were the main reasons for it becoming underfunded? Was it just, I don't know, I'm grasping straws here. I'm not sure how, how that would become underfunded.
Well, you know, one of the reasons is that interest rates aren't what they had expected back when it was originally formed, 1995. Interest rates were much better than what we are seeing now, so we've had a lot of years of not being able to keep up because the earnings that the contributions should have made were not able to make. You know, there is also quite a lot of members on that program, and so to fund all of the members that are in this program takes a lot of money, and I don't believe it was originally designed to support that many members because it has active and inactive members in that listing.
So, in order to dissolve this, do we have reporting requirements, acknowledgement requirements from the individuals?
There is paperwork that the members are required to fill out. As soon as they, there has been a couple changes to the numbers, so they're still getting me the final prorated amount for each member. They will be receiving documentation that shows their specific amount, and then they have to fill it out and sign off on it.
So, for the rest of the council, what are, what are your thoughts on this?
I have a question. What about members who are deceased? Did they get money at the point of their death for that amount, or?
There is a life insurance, yeah, there's a life insurance plan that is in effect, and so any member who would have passed away, that insurance benefit would have been claimed to, for their beneficiaries.
And Diane, the, the plan pays from 65 out until death, so the part that we're looking at terminating is not a death benefit.
No, but, but what Betsy was saying is that if they die, there is, they do get this life insurance.
Right, which, which we are continuing.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Oh, that's good. That's what I was kind of, I didn't, I just wondered, I was sure that they didn't just disappear, but I wanted to make sure that was the case, so thank you.
Yes, and that's a $25,000 base life insurance, so there are different scenarios that could increase that payment.
Mm-hmm. Like if they die in duty and things like that?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I'm not hearing anything else, so I guess that means
Are there any retired members?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Vicky.
Are there, are there any retired members from the department that are currently collecting under this?
Anyone who has already retired under this program is receiving an annuity that has been purchased out of the fund, so they will continue to receive their annuity. That will not stop because that's already been funded, but it's, it's members that are currently active and not yet retired. That's, those are the ones that are going to be affected.
We, we had an agreement with a, a previous firefighter, and he recently turned 65 and is collecting the annuity.
Yeah, that's, that's the last one out of this, if, if you should pass this.
Diane, did you have something else?
So, yeah, I do, I, I had to think a little bit here, but, so now, if we pass this, then the current firefighters will get the amount that they have accrued up until now, but they will, will they still get a life insurance policy, too?
Yes, yes, we, the life insurance policy is separate, so we will continue that life insurance policy for all of the active members.
That's good. Okay, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I have.
This is Doug. So, from the documents and the conversation, this has not been an effective method of getting people more actively involved in the fire department. Is that correct?
That's what I understand, yes. That Todd would like to, Chief Yandre would like to do a different kind of incentive program where they would be receiving an, maybe an annual payment based on their, their service, maybe looking at how many fires they've attended, the meetings they've attended, the trainings they've, they've attended, some kind of program that would reward them for, for a more immediate, this is what you've done for your community, and here is an incentive for doing that.
Especially for the younger people, it might be more tempting.
Yes.
Okay. Unless there's any more questions, I will ask Ms. D. to call a roll call vote.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed, 5-0.
All right, item 8D, ordinance 1214. This is the third reading, and what do we need to do here? By title only, correct? Yeah, okay. Go ahead and read that for us, please.
Ordinance 1214, amending City of Lake Mills ordinance 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcels 24607132422003 and 24607132422004, Topol's Twin and Repair, Topol Trust, and Daniel and Tyra Topol, 1110 and 1122, South Main Street.
Do we have a motion of adoption for ordinance 1214?
I move adoption of ordinance 1214, summoning amendment.
Thank you, Vicky. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. All right, is there any discussion that anybody would like to bring up at this time? So, we're going to plan business for that area. And all the documents and everything are in place. That's, we are waiting on those, and those are all in. Does anybody have any, any comments whatsoever? All right, let's call roll call vote, please.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Thank you. Item 9, recommendation for future agendas. So, we do know that we have, next meeting, we'll have the branding. Is that correct, Steve? Was it the next meeting?
That's correct. It'll be at 6:00.
Okay. So. We'll be spread out in here with masks as much as, as much as humanly possible, and if you need to go to another room and just meet over the eight by eight, I'm sure we can set that up, too, if we have to, if you don't feel comfortable, all of us in the same room here. And then, the council meeting after that, when, let's see here, we had talked about stuff for 977, so that, that's probably going to be a few meetings out, I'm assuming, before we see anything from that. That's after you take it. That's after you take it and take the options and talk with the homeowners and talk with the golf course and figure out what our course of action is going to be.
Yeah, we have an engineer developing a couple options and we obviously want to know, our position is the golf course has to pay for the improvements.
Right.
So we'd meet with them, we'd obviously give the homeowners an opportunity to see it. Obviously, I imagine that they're all going to be at the council meeting because you guys get to make that final decision, looking it over and evaluating what options are there. So yeah, I imagine, I can, you know, I can press them, but I'm imagining the soonest we're going to get to it is the first meeting in September.
Okay. No, and that makes sense. It takes time to get stuff done and in place and conversations to happen. So is there anything else that's pressing coming up besides you letting us know that the budgets and stuff will be out there?
Yeah, the budgets, I'm hoping, will be ready to go and the first meeting is September. The Rock Lake Research Memo will be ready at the next meeting. And I think, Misty, do you have the other items that would be on the agenda?
I don't have them with me and I wasn't at this morning's meeting because I was doing public tests. I don't have anything coming to mind.
Yeah, we had a list of them and I didn't write them down.
No problem. I did have one question for Steve Fields. Do we know when we'll hear something or we'll have some discussion on Tyra Nina Park?
That's going to be at the next.
Next meeting?
That'll be at the next meeting. Rob is putting together, the Parks Board made a recommendation and Rob has been working on the memo and he asked for it to go on the 18th agenda.
Okay, nope, that works. Last thing that I had before we adjourn is, Doug, you weren't here for correspondence. Did you have anything else besides the email that all of us got for 977 Pinnacle? Did you have anything else you wanted to discuss?
Uh, no.
Okay, okay. All right. With that being said then, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.